Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the South Brunswick Board of Education for tonight's reorganization meeting of January 9th, 2025. Please rise for the salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a statement of advance notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with one slight change on the presentations for the actual district, for the actual board meeting, the regular meeting, we will not be having our annual code of ethics training for this evening. Our board attorney's family came down with COVID and they could not get themselves a replacement, so we'll have that ethics training at the next meeting. So our only edit for our agenda this evening for our regular meeting is the removal of the annual code of ethics. Can I get a motion to approve our agendas?
Mr. Mitchell?
Second.
Ms. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to announce the results of the board, South Brunswick Board of Education election results. We had Rajesh Soni was a total of 8,136 votes. Ms. Sucha Raj was 7,784 votes able to attend tonight. So at this time, I'd like to see Ms. Lisa Rogers over at our podium along with Rajesh Soni, so we could administer the oath of office.
Introduce her, no? I don't know. I don't remember.
First up, we have a... If you would just want to read your statement.
Yep. Okay. I, Lisa Rogers, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Lisa Rogers, do solemnly affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly, excuse me, perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I affirm and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Take your seat at the desk.
Good luck.
Our newest addition to the South Brunswick Board of Education, Rajesh Soni, welcome.
Thank you.
Please read your brief.
I, Rajesh Soni, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state, under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Rajesh Soni, do solemnly affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a board of education, and I faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I affirm and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19-4-1. Thank you.
Congratulations. We have a seat for you. Ready to go. Our next order of business, the South Brunswick Board of Education, is the election of a president. At this time, I'd open up the nominations for president. Can I get a name or a motion for president?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Laura Hernandez.
Can I get a second?
I would like to introduce her.
One second.
A second.
Mitchell?
Yes.
You want to read something?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mrs. Laura Hernandez, it's a pleasure to nominate her. As a current board member, Mrs. Hernandez has served on the Policy Committee and chaired the Education Committee. She has also been an active liaison to Constable and Brunswick Ekers along with the Township Commission on Women, where she regularly attends meetings and events. Laura is a diligent board member who's on top of communication from the district and has completed various professional development programs for school board members. She's a proven leader and has been in the field of education for the past 25 years, serving in many capacities. She has a master's degree in educational administration and has served as a principal in Randolph District. She was also the Morris County representative working with the New Jersey Department of Education to develop the requirements of service learning hours as the education, high school graduation requirement. In the past, Laura has served as a member of the Diversity Council at Keene University for 15 years, which involved district administrators from throughout the state and served her last several years as council president. She has also worked at Rutgers University, where she supervised student teachers, helping them construct lessons, observe lessons, and provide feedback. She has also worked at Thomas Edison University as an instructor, working with teachers throughout the state, increasing their knowledge in methods and strategies to work with students new to the country. She has run the children's ministry at her church for over 10 years while developing the curriculum that was taught there for students four to 12 years of age. Currently, Laura continues to advocate for her students in the Trenton Public School System as an ESL teacher, where she serves at-risk students as well as transient students. She is an active member of the Intervention and Referal Survey Committee, the Students' Attendance Committee, and the Social Emotional Learning Team. So I urge my colleagues on the board to consider her candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other nominations for the position of president for the South Brunswick Board of Education? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to close nominations.
Motion, close.
Lisa Rogers? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Do you, Ms. Laura Hernandez, consent to having your name offered as board president?
Yes.
Can I get a roll call vote? Ms. Julie Hernandez is absent.
For...
Excuse me, for our... Ms. Deepa Karthik? Absent as well. Ms. Alicia Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Rajakrishna?
Yes.
Mr. Mike Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Smithe Raj?
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Soni?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
Your vote. That motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Hernandez, for board president of South Brunswick. At this time... Well, yeah, we had a conversation. At this time, I'm going to ask for the nominations for the position of vice president. Do I have anybody for a nomination for vice president?
Yes, I'd like to offer up Deepa Karthik for the role of vice president of the Board of Ed, if I can get a second.
You have a second, Ms. Hernandez?
I'd just say a few couple things about her. Deepa has been an active participant in multiple committees that she has been a part of and has demonstrated her earnest contribution as a member of the board in recent years. She has been the former chair of policy and an active member of the Education and Operations Committees. Mrs. Karthik brings her independent thoughts and viewpoints to policymaking and critical discussions. She is a vocal advocate for the community and is always visibly participating in school district discussions and activities. Deepa is a proven team leader. She communicates openly and she's very sincere and honest about where she stands, and she's committed to our children and to our staff, and she's a worthy candidate for this position.
Do I have any other nominations for the position of vice president for the South Brunswick Board of Education? Seeing none, can I get a resolution, a motion to close nominations?
Motion.
Ms. Rogers?
Second.
Raj? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I had, this is an anomaly, as our nominee is not present, she's not here this evening, had conversations with legal. The Board of Education can enact and vote for anybody that they'd like to represent themselves as vice president for this position. It's different, but it can be done. There's nothing wrong with us voting to have Deepa become our vice president. She's an elected, she was elected, she just has not read her oath yet. She will, if nominated, if everybody votes and nominated for the position, she will not take the seat until she reads her oath at the next board meeting. So that's how this would work. So we're not breaking any laws, we're not changing any kind of practice. This is just an anomaly, but as per legal, this is a very easy thing for us to do. So with that being said, I've had conversations with Ms. Karthik. She does consent to having her name offered as board vice president, and I'd like to take a roll call vote. Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Rajakrishna?
Yes.
Mr. Mike Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Smithe Raj?
Yes.
Mrs. Lisa Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Soni?
Yes.
That motion passes. We have a vice president who will take her seat after she reads her oath at our next board meeting. At this time, I'd like to close the reorganization meeting. Can I get a motion to close the reorganization meeting? Who gave me that motion? Too many people talking at once. Okay. Raj?
Mr. Krishna.
Krishna, yeah. And then who, I got a second?
Dr. Raj.
Dr. Raj, Scott's second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this time, I'd like to turn the gavel over to our new board president, Mrs. Laura Hernandez, where she will ask for a motion to move to a regular meeting and proceed with our agenda for a regular meeting as of January 9th, 2025.
Yay! Take your seat. Take your seat. No, I'm good. I'm good. I'm good. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Got tough shoes to follow. So at this time, I'd like to have a motion to move on to the regular meeting. Motion? Mr. Mitchell moved, and Ms. Khan seconds it.
I'm sorry, she beat you.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, she beat you. I saw her hand. I saw her hand. Okay, so let's move on to the regular meeting. At this time, we'd like the report of our student representative, Ms. Mira.
Hi, guys. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a relaxing winter break and is ready for 2025. Starting off with some school news, our upcoming Spirit Week is approaching next week, from January 13th to the 17th. We start off with Groufit on Monday, Teacher-Student Swap Day on Tuesday, Wicked Wednesday, Rhyme Without Reason Thursday, and Class Color Day on Friday. Our Spirit Week ends with our Winter Pep Rally on January 17th, and this, and the theme for this year is SBHS's 2024 Spotify Wrapped, where we recognize the winter sports team and award the class with the most spirit points with the Spirit Cup. Student activities would like to thank everyone that donated to our Holiday Giving Tree and our Adopt a Family Initiative. Due to your generosity, 16 families were adopted, and we donated over $860 in gift cards to families in South Brunswick who are in need of support this holiday season. Our clubs are doing some very exciting things. 150 DECA members traveled to Keene University today for DECA Regional Competition. The SBHS Pirandello players have been preparing for their opening performance of Puffs, which will run from January 23rd, the 24th, and the 25th. Yesterday, South Brunswick High Student Council attended NJAC's 99th Annual Winter Convention at TC&J. The candidates running for state student council campaigned and presented their speeches. After voting the 2025 State Student Council was elected, was announced, and I'm excited to announce that I won my election, and beginning in February, I will be serving as the NJAC State Student Council Vice President. At the convention, the student council members attended several workshops presented by other student councils in the state, and our council presented a workshop on running a successful student senate. It was very well attended, and we received great feedback, and our student council was also presented with the NJAC Honor School Award. Moving on to athletics, the girls' winter track and field team won the GMC Relay's championship on January 4th in Tom's River. The boys' winter track and field team won the GMC Relay Championship on January 4th, and the team placed top three in every event other than a fifth place in the 4x200. We are accepting sports forms for spring season tryouts, and the deadline to submit winter sports is Thursday, February 6, 2025. Please get your child's sports forms in to avoid delays in the process. More information can be found on our athletic handbook on the high school and middle school website. Thank you for your time, and I hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. That's an awesome, awesome thing. Awesome. At this time, I will turn it over to our fearless leader, Mr. Fetter.
First, congratulations. Fantastic news. And Happy New Year to everybody. Welcome. Congratulations to Rajesh. Are you still over there? There you are. Congratulations, Rajesh. And we had an opportunity, David and I, to meet with Rajesh earlier in December, and just to give him a general overview. And it's welcome aboard, so Rajesh asked for, he was wondering, he asked today why you didn't get certain information. So be careful what you ask for now, Rajesh. That means you know you're going to get all this information now every day. But it's a lot coming your way, but looking forward to your partnership on the board, so thank you. And congratulations to Lisa and to Deepa as well for jumping back So we sent out a letter to the community about weather, because that's what we do. We do weather now for the next two, three months. It was a funny thing. So Lourdes, my new assistant is here tonight, and she sent out the letter, and we got a few notices saying, is this real? Is this a fake letter? Does this really come? Because it wasn't exactly how Murph did it. So there'll be other things to the board that come differently than how Murph did it. It's going to be how Lourdes does it. And so the reality was, it was a real letter. And it also went out today, Lourdes, in the weekly update, yeah, on this more so. Bottom line, it says, to families, to parents, pay attention, make sure your information is accurate and correct in the system, in Genesis, so that if there is an emergency, you will get the notification. Seems like every year, we do have at least somebody who sends their kid to school on a day closed, and that's always, you know, not safe, right? That's not safe. So do our best to work with that. I outlined in that letter how it all works, kind of how we make the sausage when it comes to these decisions. It is definitely not the most fun thing that we do, but we try to make it light when we can. But this year, we're already seeing some lack of predictability in what's going on. I think it was on Tuesday, it was zero to 36 inches, and on Wednesday, it was a light dusting to one or two inches. I think today, there's no storm. I can't track, but by Saturday, we'll find out what the real story is, and we'll follow it. So we'll be making decisions as we do. We make the decisions, safety first, calendar second. So we got to make sure we're safe. The calendar's tight. We all know this is not a great calendar this year. We end late. We have only two built-in snow days this year. So now that won't make us make a decision that isn't safe, but we will probably not be making calls the night before as much as we've done in the past. It'll probably wait and make sure, make sure, make sure, and not take any risks in that way. So with that said, please make sure you look at that email, read it, make sure you check your Genesis account, make sure you're updated, and that'll be the most helpful thing we can do. A few things happening tonight. We have, in the back corner over there, we have some of our librarians. Hello, guys. They are here, going to work with Evelyn on a presentation about SB Reads, another great event. As David said, you were going to get ethics today. You're not getting your ethics today. We'll get it when we can reschedule that. And my last thing and point of order today is, on your agenda, you'll have, and I shared this with you in your update, you have one Mrs. Alyssa Redente, who we are asking you to approve her appointment to be an acting administrator in our district, and her first station will be at Cambridge Elementary School. So I'd like you to meet Alyssa, if you don't mind, real quick. Alyssa, you want to jump up and say hello to us?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. How are we doing? It's nice to see everyone today. I'm excited to be here. I did write a couple things down. So I'm really thrilled and excited to join the administrative community here. In my educational career, I've always promised myself never to say no to learning and growing opportunities, and that's led to little things like trick, tips and tricks for my colleagues about how to organize Google Drive and things like that. But most importantly, it's led to a lot of growing, meeting inspiring people, and opportunities that I never anticipated. Over the past 15 years, saying yes to opportunities and change and growth has led me to teach in a bunch of different positions. I've been a preschool inclusion teacher. I've taught the primary level. I have worked as a committee member and a liaison for administration. I have been a mentor, and before that, I've met a lot of amazing people that have shaped who I've become. I arrived in South Brunswick about three years ago. I was welcomed, supported, and excited for this opportunity. I started out as an instructional support staff member, a coach, and this year, I have been a district literacy coach. I've worked across three different buildings, but this year specifically, I got to know Cambridge very well. I've enjoyed spending time in the classrooms, getting to know the teachers and the staff, and I cherish the relationships that I've built with them, and I look forward to growing alongside of this inspiring and talented community. South Brunswick is a district that puts the students first, supports their staff, and includes the community. I look forward to making South Brunswick my home, like many of my colleagues have, and I want to thank you again all for this opportunity. Thank you.
All right. Good job, Alyssa. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Madam New President. Thank you. And with that, like Mr. Fetter said, Dr. Evelyn Mannan, you are up to shine our librarians in the district.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. This is fast becoming my favorite thing to do annually. I am thrilled to present what has become our annual special event, SB Reads, organized by our talented librarians, some of whom are here tonight. Mary from Brooks, Chitra, Cambridge, Kim from Crossroads North, Linda, Crossroads South, and Lisa from our high school. Thank you for joining us. This SB Reads has turned into something bigger, and I want you to know that the librarians do this free of charge. Scott, no money involved. Thank you for giving back to the South Brunswick community in this way. Our librarians generally work tirelessly to inspire love for reading across our schools. This presentation you're about to see highlights the joy and power of stories, igniting imaginations and building connections through books. So whether you're a student, teacher, or family member, there's
Award-winning author Kate DiCamillo noted that "reading should not be presented as a chore or a duty, it should be offered as a precious gift," and the librarians, teachers, and administrators of South Brunswick could not agree more. Reading opens doors to a lifetime of imagination, discovery, and growth. Books transport us to new worlds, introduce diverse perspectives, and nurture empathy. Reading hones our critical thinking and expands our vocabulary, laying a foundation for academic success. Reading offers solace in the tough times, inspiration when we need it, and a sense of connection that builds strong minds and understanding hearts. To celebrate the many ways that reading transforms us, the 15th South Brunswick Reads partnership between our schools and public library will encourage our community to proclaim "reading is a gift." As a community, we will read to foster lifelong learning. Reading encourages curiosity and intellectual development, creating a community that values knowledge and growth. Build empathy and understanding. Books offer windows into diverse experiences and cultures, helping community members connect with and understand each other. Inspire creativity and innovation. Reading sparks imagination and innovative thinking, empowering everyone to contribute fresh ideas that benefit our community. To launch this year's Townwide Read, we hope that all our students and their families will join us for our second annual South Brunswick Reads Night on Wednesday, February 12th, to be held at South Brunswick High School from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. The evening will include guest readers, local authors, and activities that highlight the gift of reading. Our PTOs will provide cookies and cocoa for all our guests. Join us as we celebrate the gift of reading together. For more information on how to participate, book recommendations, and community events, visit our website.
Thank you, Lisa. Your voice is so soothing, and the music, I don't know, it's special. Last year, at our first annual event, we had over 400 attendees. It was so well-attended. We got so many books. We might have to hijack a bus this time around. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. February 12th, 6:30 at the high school. Be there or be square.
Thank you, Dr. Mannan. And I just have to say, like, I'm just old school. I love that there's so many books. Like, I know that's online, and let's do all that. No, I like the books. I like to highlight. I like to write. So I love your position. Thank you so much for everything you do. It's awesome. Okay, I'll let you.
So in any organization, there are groups of people that, let's talk schools for a second. In schools around the country, you... second. In schools around the country, you might hear about the arts, or certain groups, certain librarians possibly, that schools cut in times of funding challenges. And the reason that library would never even come to the topic in this district is because our librarians have shown the value and just what it means to have someone who cares that much about the success of their schools, of their literacy, and they've made themselves invaluable to their buildings in this district. And actually, Kim was honored this year as our teacher keynoteer of the year. And, you know, any one of our librarians should be thought of in that manner. They are an amazing group. Evelyn is fortunate enough to be their, I guess, supervisor of sorts. But really, thank you, and pass that along to your colleagues. To really make yourself invaluable to a system is a choice through effort and through care, and we can't thank you enough. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have public comments on agenda items only. Before we go to that, I would like to read the public comment statement. "The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on the matter of community interest. Complete copies of the rules that govern this portion of the meeting are available to the public at the back of the room, or you can obtain an advanced copy by contacting the board office during regular business hours. We reserve the right to limit each speaker to no more than three minutes. It is our plan to listen to each member of the public. We will note all questions and comments made. Once all questions and comments are made from all members of the public are made, the Board of Education will respond, if necessary, to questions or comments in a most timely and effective manner available. Please consider not repeating comments and questions made by other members of the public. When you come up, we would like for you to state your name, your place of residence, or your group affiliation." Do we have any public comments on agenda items only at this time? Seeing, oh, should I wait longer? No. Seeing none, let's move on to old business.
So David has reached out to the township to fill out a form for us that we created. The form basically asks for the township to provide us, to the best of their ability, this is not exact, to the best of their ability, how many of the new construction residences will be occupied by July 25 and July 26. This is a year where we're looking at enrollment, and we're going to have to look a little differently than we normally do. It's normally not that complicated to do enrollment, but this year, depending on how many of these residents will be occupied, could have an impact on us. So it's a little complicated to understand all this. Not really to understand it, but to go through the process is complicated. When a residence gets occupied, it doesn't necessarily mean that that day will be new students. There's a five-year yield on average of new development. So there's formulas to use, and we'll work with Richard Grip, our demographer, to see if there's going to be any heavy impact, and if we're going to need to do the dreaded R-word of redistricting even a little bit. We avoid that whenever possible, but it's possible we might have to look at that in some way, just to manage keeping students in the seats. As we've shared, we have stopped any further growth of preschool programs in-house. Any future preschool programs will have to be out of district, and it's possible at some point, just so you're aware, and I think I've shared this before, that existing preschools would have to also be moved out of district. That doesn't mean we'll have less kids in our program, just where their situation could change. So a lot goes into this. The other area, David and I were talking about this this afternoon, is birth rates. So one of the things that you factor when you're doing kindergarten is birth rates. How many students were born five years prior to kindergarten? And those records are kept. We can get access to that. So we're going to be using a little bit more science this year in our predictions for enrollment, because it's going to be very tight. Not tight meaning space. Our budget's going to be tight. So we want to make sure that we're applying the dollars to where they need to go. So just be aware that Brian has been in constant contact with David, and as we spoke a few times already, and Brian Bidlak, the township administrator, will be getting that information to David. David will provide that to me. And enrollment is the first step in our budget process, is determining enrollment. So we'll do the best we can with that, and thanks in advance to the township and for David for getting that work done. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, next up is new business. There is none at this time, so we will move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda review. All right.
It's you, David, it's you.
I know, yeah, it's me. I'm on. I got it. I'm on the spot. Here we go. All right. So at this time, our consent agenda is very small this evening for a reorganization meeting. We have a very small bills list. We're approving an acceptance of some funds for some Chapter 192 non-public compensatory education. We have a resolution for a lease purchase that we're approving a lease purchase for five small buses, confirming bid by Cogent Leasing was the lowest bidder. You can see in your consent agenda, excuse me, the lowest percentage bid rate, and the lowest amount of years for the bid, or for the payback. So we also have an accepted tuition students. We're approving an out-of-district student tuition adjustment. We have an HIV intimidation bully report, and we have our personnel agenda, and that's our entire consent agenda this evening. It's very short, concise.
So one thing David mentioned in his update was the, we're accepting another tuition student. If you remember, we've shared with you, we've opened three different programs that tuition students may come to. We have a preschool disabled program that not all districts have. We have our ERI, our RISES program, which is currently held at Brooks Crossing, and we also have an 18- to 21-year-old program. So all of those programs, Raff shares with his county soup, oh, sorry, with his county directors, and it's been very successful. I think this is our fifth tuition student now in both RISES and PST. We have not received any tuition students for 18- to 21 program yet. We're pretty surprised, but we think it'll happen. It's just a matter of time. And once you start, once it opens up, we'll see where that goes. But our RISES program has been extremely appealing to our neighbors. One other thing that could happen as we look to next year's budget is looking at rising the RISES program, pun intended, into the middle school, and see how we can support kids there, if this looks like it'll be viable for our own students first. It's always first our own students first, and then, of course, offering that up as well. Right now, the RISES program is, gets closer and closer to being cost-neutral, which, you know, we're talking about students that might have been in out-of-district placements costing upwards of $80,000 to $100,000 a kid. So not only are we servicing students...
Per year.
Per year. Not only are we servicing students in-house instead of having to send them out of district, which is wonderful for our kids and our families, but by being able to bring tuition students in, it does bring the program to a very, very cost-effective, which is a nice bonus. It's not the reason you do it, but it is a nicety part of it. So just want to share that.
Can I have a question? Or do you want to go through consent? So how, for our 18- to 21-year-old program, I think that is such an amazing program. How do we, how are we getting the word out, or how are all the districts know, you know?
It's done through, most is done through Raphael, who meets every month with the other directors in the county. That's the best place. I've talked about it to my superintendent colleagues as well, but it will most likely happen mostly from the directors, who, you know, see where they're currently sending their 18- to 21, or how they're providing support for them. So most districts do not have their own 18- to 21 program. So once it gets a little bit more, you know, we'll hope to see it. The RISES program lit up quickly after one year, but we'll hope to keep moving along with the 18- to 21. This is a fantastic program. You've met the students. It's a fantastic program, and the teachers there are amazing as well.
Thanks. So I'd like to have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion. Dr. Raj. And second? Raj. Mr. Krishna, thank you, Lisa. Mr. Krishna, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call, oh, roll call. Darn, Lisa, you warned me about that.
Ms. Laura Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alicia Khan?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Shoney?
Yes.
Mr. Mike Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Smitha Raj?
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Rajesh Shoney?
I believe I'll abstain from 1.1 and 1.3 since I don't have the details, so otherwise I'm yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries.
I don't have a motion on, right? Okay, good. Before we go on to board committee and liaison, can I back it up a little bit to the old business with enrollment? I just want to ask the board, do you have questions? Does anybody have questions on the enrollment and what we're looking at? I mean, I know just driving through South Brunswick, I was telling Lisa, I went down Ridge Road, and I went, what's that? Where'd the trees go? What's going on here? So I just didn't know. Okay. Now we'll go on to board, committee, and liaison. The Board of, well, I'm Education Committee. Yeah, no, we didn't meet, so there's no report here. Policy? Operations? I'll go with Dave. Right, so...
No report.
Okay. And Finance?
I made my report last month. Thank you.
Okay. Liaison? Any liaison reports?
I have one. I meant, I meant to make this report last month, but the meeting got so late that I didn't want to hold us, so I'm going to make the report tonight as quickly as possible. I met with the NGSBA Douglas Assembly on Saturday, December 7. Association President Karen Coriolino, MD, and I called the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m., went through intros of executive committee and committee chairs, gave her remarks, and introduced our executive doctor, executive director, Dr. Timothy Purnell, for his remarks. He highlighted the following. The deadline for new board member, well, that's already passed, takes place on, okay. And just a reminder that the new board member orientation training takes place this month, January 24 through the 26, and also February 21 to 23, to the 23rd. Also, boards, many boards earned their certification in 2024. Hopefully, we'll be one of the next ones. And Dr. Purnell urges more members to join the NGSBA connection involving board presidents, new board members, and certified board leaders. Workshop 2024 was a great success. Government Relations is following every bill that comes out. There's over 1,000 of them last year alone. Also, nonpartisan Boards of Education, they're really monitoring that as well with all this out there. NGSBA stands as follows. We have a new deputy, oh, no, no. We have a new deputy director, Dr. Nicholas Diaz. Members moved to adopt the rules for the conduct of the Douglas Assembly meeting. Addressed and adopted or rejected proposed resolutions from local Boards of Education facilitated by the VP for Legislation and Resolutions, following her annual report, and the meeting was adjourned. That's my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Okay, next up, we have an opportunity for a second public comment. This is on any topic that you would like. Please remember the public comment statement that I previously read. That takes effect still. It's still in effect. Do we have anybody that would like to come up? Mr. Nathanson, come on down.
That was a long walk. Barry Nathanson, 40 Dunson Lane. Just a few things. Mr. Shoney, congratulations. If I give you one advice, make sure you read your agenda prior to the meeting. And any of the senior staff can answer it, but go through the superintendent or Mr. Palowski and get your questions answered before you come to the meeting. That's always a good thing. I want to congratulate also Deeper, who's not here, for being re-elected. Deeper has become, over the last three years, a true friend, and she's a very good asset to this board. Now, I have to congratulate Lisa Rogers. Lisa Rogers has become more than a friend, and she has really grown into this role. And a lot of people don't remember that, unfortunately, she should have been on the board a year sooner, but unfortunately, her mother passed away. So she stepped aside, came back, and has proven to be a true leader and a great board member, so. I would say something about Deeper being a vice president, but she's not here, so. Just a remark to Laura. Congratulations, Laura. It's not easy in that seat, even though you're in the wrong seat.
I know. I didn't move. I didn't get up. I moved.
Because no one's going to fit, just something. It's the best thing that I can tell an incoming president is learn from Mr. Fetter, Mr. Palowski, and these three great assistant superintendents, because they've been around a few years. And so, again, if you have questions, get them answered before you walk in the door, so you're on the same page with everybody, and that's the most important, because you are running a meeting, but you have to be kind of copacetic, so. I just want to congratulate everybody, and I wish you a really good year. This year is not going to be an easy year with a lot of other things going on, but you have some of the best staff, probably in the state of New Jersey. You have the best student body around, and a hell of a parent base. So remember that when you do, so. And Scott, I will never sit in front of, based on what you said. Just saying. Take care, guys.
Thanks, Barry. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Okay, with that, I would just like to make, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Lisa.
Question, or a point of inquiry. We had talked about the retreat.
Yes.
So I'll ask the president to, if you want to wait and do an email out, or if you want to have a discussion, it'll be totally up to you, but I do have all the results in, so it'll be your decision. You want to just communicate via email or discuss?
Let's do it via email.
Via email, you got it.
Yeah, let's do it during via email, okay?
That's fine.
So I just want to make sure everybody voted, though. That little doodle thing went out?
Yep, I just got the last vote about an hour ago.
Okay, okay. So Lisa, you and I will talk.
Sure.
And, you know, I'll send something out tomorrow.
You got it.
And Scott, we'll have something to you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, committees. Please email me. I'm not going to chase you. That's one thing I won't do. Please email me with your top two committees that you would like to serve on, okay? Some of us might only be on one, and some of us might be on two, but, you know, I just kind of want to have idea of what you would like to do. And then, based on the information I get, then I'll sit down with Deeper when she's back in the country, and liaison position too, if there's any kind of liaison position that you guys would like to do, all in an email, okay? I need that. But, and no later, and I'm a stickler, no later than next Wednesday, because we got to get this up and running and do all that kind of stuff, okay? Thanks, Lisa. Go ahead.
I suggest we email Laura, email Laura and Deeper.
And Deeper, thank you.
Okay, you don't have to email David or myself.
Right.
Just Laura and Deeper.
Yep, that's it, me and Deeper. Okay. Okay, and Rajesh, your email's up and running? Is his email? Yay, your email's up and running. Okay, good. So, okay, with that, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Mitchell, second?
Second.
Ms. Rogers, I would like, the meeting is adjourned. Good night, South Brunswick.